Okay, here we go. I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass, City Council, January 18, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Father, thank you for this day, thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you, my Father, for starting the new year. I pray, Lord, your blessings upon our city. I pray that you guide us as a council, our city manager, city attorney, each department heads, my Father, that we come together as one as we have been to work for the betterment of our city. This we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we're going to go to presentations and proclamations. And we're going to go to the long-term planning, planning for the Civic Center, Aquatic Center, and the Ed Ben Hazel Richmond Public Library. Caitlin?
Paxton.
Mayor and council, this is something we were hoping to do at an earlier meeting, however, I wanted to make sure everybody was here. It's an important presentation, as we all know. Caleb Paxton is the new Director of Community Enrichment and has a PowerPoint for you to talk about plans for the three entities within Community Enrichment.
Caleb, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me this evening and allowing me the opportunity to finally present. It's been a couple of pushbacks, but I'm glad we're all here. Okay, I'm going to look up from time to time so I don't misspeak. So what we're talking about this evening is our long-term but short-term, so a 12-month out goal for the three major components of the Community Enrichment Department, coming into the role and understanding where its strengths and weaknesses are and what the key items we needed to focus on for 2022. So we'll begin the presentation discussing the Civic Center. And I have those goals broken down into three main categories. Coming into the Civic Center in November of 2021, assessing the situation, assessing the strategy that was taking place at the time that I arrived, determining the best strategy for moving forward, and what that has been identified as is a shift away from sort of a passive, organic, sales approach, if you will, if you'll go back to the previous slide, thank you, to moving into one that's a little more sales aggressive. And what that means is shifting our strategy from allowing clients to approach us on a walk-in and phone call basis exclusively to actually going out and targeting those audiences and bringing those clients into us. And the way that we've been facilitating that is by updating our sales materials, training a lot, and executing cold calling, and identifying ways within the Civic Center that we can upsell the property. Another area that's going to bring increased traffic and bring increased clientele to the Civic Center is through community events. As a community center, the Civic Center has facilitated a lot of elements throughout the community through event locations and partnerships. That's an item that we really do value. So in 2022, we will be focusing on strengthening and increasing those partnerships and even sponsorships. We're going to highlight our assets to our community. You'll learn a little bit more about that. We're going to meet the needs of the community. In order to do that, we have to identify those needs by being involved and connecting. The last main item under the Civic Center is through advertising. Now, this is an area that was explained to me should be a focus point for when I came onboard, and we definitely have really embraced that and looked at ways that we can capitalize on that effort. We are focusing on developing our target audience for 2022. We're expanding our reach, and we are creating a consistent message across our platforms. Thank you for, go to the next slide. You might ask, okay, so this all sounds impressive, but how is that actually going to be executed? And this slide is going to give us a little bit more details on that. So our aggressive sales approach, what we've been doing over the last two months, streamlining our booking process. We've been going in, organizing, analyzing, updating our sales material, making sure that we have the right tools in place so that we can go out and be an aggressive force and bring in the clients that will fill the Civic Center. We have focused on updating a sales software that can actually facilitate bringing in these guests and is a lot more up-to-date, and it does integrate our website really nicely. And so that's another great tool that we're focusing on for the sales, client calls, visits, and venue tours. In partnership with the marketing that we touched upon, this is something that, you know, we're developing and training in how to capitalize on something that is already strong for the Civic Center. It sees a lot of walk-in traffic and organic calls. And by really simple and strong marketing tactics, we've seen a huge uptick in that. And so focusing on developing how the staff can strategically capitalize on that. We're going to focus on corporations and industry. That is a market that is very successful for a venue of this nature. They book consistent small groups or sometimes very grand banquets. And that's where a facility like this capitalizes on. So the venue itself. We have focused on a lot of equipment and venue maintenance as of beginning in winter of 2021. So when I came onboard, Christina and Gary have done a really great job of getting the ball rolling and taking care of a lot of things that needed to take place in the Civic Center. And we've taken that baton, if you will, and continue to carry it on through. We've gotten our first sponsor to embrace our garden. That's something that's really important when you're selling a venue, is making it welcoming. So that's going to be rolling out soon. A welcoming sales office. If you go into the Civic Center now, I promise you, it looks like we really want to see everybody. It's welcoming, it's open. And then our community. So as I mentioned earlier, maintaining and strengthening our community bonds, partnering with organizations in the community that are doing phenomenal things for Aransas Pass and saying, you guys have the vision, the passion, the will, the determination, and we have a great venue and a great team. What can we do to emphasize the community element of this property? Embracing our members, again, those organizations. And all of this is really to create the sense that the Civic Center is the venue. We would like the Civic Center to be this synonymous name that's mentioned, you know, where are we going to have an event? Well, of course, the Civic Center. Or where is that event going on? It sounds like it's going to be a lot of fun. Of course, it's at the Civic Center. So that's what we're creating and doing all of these. If you'll go to the next slide. Okay, the next topic's the Aquatic Center. So again, broken that strategy down into three key elements. Of course, first and foremost, if we're looking at revenue, we need to drive admissions. So what we have built and focused on for the month of January is pursuing our school groups and parties. This is something that they do regularly throughout the year. Again, it has been much like the Civic Center, where it's pretty organically had our groups that visit us annually come back and visit us fairly consistently. But this time, we are shifting those gears, and we're approaching them ahead of time. And we're saying, hey, we value you as a customer, a client that comes often to our venue. Let us give you the first option to book your dates. And that way, you know, we have figured out how many we can accommodate in one season, and that is our goal. So we are pushing our limits there. Something that's a little bit new to the Aquatic Center is partnering packages with area hotels and with the Civic Center. And we would like to do that through consignment tickets. That's where we say, you know, we have a great product. We are one of the only pool amusement parks in the area that has this size and these attractions to offer, especially with the recent closing of the Schlitterbahn project down the road. So help us help you sell your venue. Partner with us, sell these tickets. So that's something that we're working on for this season. Advertising, much like the Civic Center, expanding our reach, our events. So the team has been incredibly creative, and it really just took kind of sitting down and asking them, where do you see the Aquatic Center going? And they've had phenomenal ideas. We're doing a coastal environment and water safety event in April and May, swim lessons. We're looking at expanding those schedules and availabilities. And we're also doing themed swim times in those swim lessons. The concession stand, concessions is an area that is highly profitable, especially for an item like the Aquatic Center. They have had concession offerings in the past, and that has been very profitable. What we're going to do is kind of revamp, update the concession area, evaluate what the best efficient way is to offer food and beverage and merchandise and souvenir items, and capitalize on that for the property. The next slide, if you will. Now, I mentioned some of the events that we are planning for the Aquatic Center. In April, we are planning an Earth Day event, and we're collaborating with a lot of local conservation organizations. We're very excited about it. The property itself is sitting in a gorgeous area that really does showcase our coastal wildlife. And this is going to be a very informational and educational family fun event to pre-kick the season off in April. In May, drowning prevention month, you know, I've mentioned that this is a property unlike many other in the area. So we're going to capitalize on that and be the leader in safety and awareness for families in the community. We're going to do a child and parent and preschool lessons in May. And at the end of that course, we're going to do a big event for graduation, and we're bringing in a lot of foundations that will help explain to our community ways that they can be safe while they enjoy coastal South Texas. Next slide, please. This is the schedule that we're looking at for the Aquatic Center in April. That's when we do our mass bringing on of our team. We're hiring, training, certifying our lifeguards, getting them ready. This is going to be about 30 guards, and it will also contain four concession stands, approximately four cashiers. So we are going to see a huge influx of young folks that are helping us run the Aquatic Center. May, open on the weekends, and this is the time when we're capitalizing on those school groups that I mentioned. Monday through Friday, we have lots of time and space where we're bringing those folks in. June and August, our summer season will be open daily minus Tuesday, regular rotating swim lessons, weekly, water aerobics, evening private parties. September, open weekends, private parties and groups. And we'd like to maintain the aerobics for our senior program, and that's something we'll talk about a little later, is bring that program a little further out into the fall and see how far we can stretch that. It does depend a little bit on our staffing capabilities, but that's something we are fully opening and exploring on how we can expand those dates. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So at our library. The library has done a phenomenal job looking at the world that we're in today, which is not only moving towards a technological age, but was also faced with a lot of closures where gatherings were really not encouraged over the last year and a half, two years. And so what this team has done, rather than allow that to deter their efforts, was they looked for ways to be technology and informationally advanced. They have wanted to focus on visitor quality. They've continued to recognize and respect concerns during the COVID-19 pandemic. Their reading hours and conducted in class. Let's see, they've been leader of technology. They're utilizing a modern ebook audiobook service called Overdrive. And what this does is it allows patrons to still have access to their books without going into public should they not feel comfortable, should they have students in class, et cetera. They have been providing computers through this time, 17 computers to the community. They've developed systems for virtual learning activities, online storytimes to adapt to today's environment. They continue to pursue and are awarded grants for providing laptops with increased software capabilities for their patrons. For their community agenda, they're beginning their meetings again, small groups. They're aiming to bring back some of those educational classes that they've offered in the past, and they are also a location for the community food basket. So they've really made their community a priority. Next slide, please. Our senior community. This was something that Gary in particular explained to me was something very important to the Aransas Pass community and something that for a long time, unfortunately, has been a challenge in providing. So we really have made this our goal. So the interim location until we determine a long-term spot will be the Civic Center as the main facility. That location may vary based on whatever project or program we're doing at the time. As mentioned, expanding those aerobics, that's clearly not going to be at the Civic Center, probably not a big enough pool there. Our target programs are regular, weekly or bi-weekly themed meetings, games, music, movie nights. These are some of the things that my team and I have sat down and looked at what was offered and what would be valuable to our, our senior community now. Classes, computer dance, we've had some folks reaching out to us about computer classes, jewelry, giving information on services that are important to this demographic, on insurance, assistance, et cetera. So our first meeting will actually be next week on the 24th during the afternoon. It will be a meet and greet. So this one is not going to be anything too formal, too fancy. We will be encouraging and practicing social distancing, and it's really an opportunity for this community to come together, meet new faces, make new friends. And what I'm inviting them to do is share with us, what is their vision for this program? What are the things that are valuable to them that we can provide? And we've already had support, folks calling us saying, you know, how can we help with this? And we're excited to get that started. Next slide, please. So marketing, and we're almost done, I promise. With our marketing, we have focused on being very strategic, very efficient, and very targeted. We are placing ads again in the Aransas Pass guide and on a chamber digital marquee, which is in the Civic Center. It's that beautiful device that you see when you walk into the Civic Center. They've been a great partner with that. Seasonal billboards, and we're strategically crafting the message to target the audience for, you know, why are they coming to this area at certain times in the year? And how can we really showcase our product to catch that audience? Social media, we have really increased our presence on social media, and it's been very beneficial, up so much as day-to-day, as we post something, we'll see, you know, one to five calls immediately after an advertisement goes out. So it's been very beneficial. Mascot media, if you see in the center of the slide there, we are now advertising on our local schools game roster. And so every time parents and families click on there to look for, you know, how do they visit their loved ones' next event? They see, you know, we're open, come check us out. We want to be part of the fun. So we are working on some stand banners. That's a retractable banner that will be displayed in a couple of local hotels. So that's another way to capitalize on that audience. Rack cards for both the Aquatic Center and the Civic Center. Those will be distributed at hotels, motels, and regional shows. Next slide, please, unless this was. That is the last one. Okay, so I know that was a lot of information. I've been waiting a little bit to deliver this, but please, if you have any questions, I would love to answer them.
How are you getting the message out to the seniors to get involved?
We have distributed flyers around town to all of the, everyone who was willing to allow us to post them at all the RV parks, all of the apartments, some of the local laundromats, the library. We're pushing that on social media. We have it posted in the Civic Center as well. We've been sharing it in some community groups.
What about churches?
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Would they allow you to put any kind of flyer on, say, for instance, I know that Walmart and HB, they have like an office that people go in, cash checks, pay bills, anything possibly that they allow you to put like a flyer at their stand?
Thank you. Thank you. We need a strategy session with you guys.
With the realtors that have rentals and stuff because they always have information in their rental properties, so we need to make sure that those realtors have that information.
Thank you. I think we have some realtors who are very willing to help, so I can email them.
I know. Possibly even their website, because I know some of them do have that also.
Thank you, ladies.
Any other questions?
No. Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. One last thing before I go. I did want to kind of share some exciting information with you guys. One of the things that the team did before I came onboard was they needed to quantify their bookings over the last several years. Some of that was for FEMA, some of that was for COVID, et cetera, et cetera. Going through those numbers and looking from 2018 to 2021, I discovered that 2021 was their most populated year, which was after the pandemic, and that's even, again, in reflection with 2018, 2019. So I took those numbers and I pulled a little data from our current bookings right now, and I'd like to share those with you. So in 2021, from January to December, we had 23 total training days. We had 11 public events. We had three school events, 21 private events, and 41 church events. As of January 12th, 2022, from January to December of 2022, we have 29 training days, 13 public events, three school events, 27 private events, and 53 church events. And just this week, we've booked another one to three events privately over the weekend. So we've only made it this far through the year, and this is already what the year looks like. So the team is incredible. They really have worked hard, and I have a lot of confidence in them. Thank you, guys.
Good job, Peggy.
Okay, now, we're going to go to the, we're going to go to the consent agenda. All of the following items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the sitting council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member so requests. If discussion is desired, this item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. And I was not here for the January 13th.
Neither was I.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for 12:06, 2021, 12:20, 2021, and 1:03, 2022. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, I'm going to open up public hearing on case number 2201-01. Public hearing on request for a conditional use permit submitted by Robert Lawson to allow for a mixed land use residential and existing sand excavating operation at 1111 slash 1121, West Moore Avenue, Aransas County, property ID 14191, block 214, lot 10, five acres. It, Aransas Pass, Texas, the property is currently zoned R7B, single-family dwelling.
Good evening. So this is a similar case from last month, but not same. It is a sand excavation project going on, and the applicant does not have a permit, and the zoning is not in conformity with the operation. It means that the applicant is operating a project excavation of sand within an area that is not permitted, and therefore it went before the Planning and Zoning Commission last Monday on the 10th. They digressed a lot on it because they have had a similar case previously on that situation, and so they came out with a recommendation that because the applicant has been operating for some time, they will allow him to stop the operation after four months. Between this period of if you guys make a decision to follow what the PNZ recommended, that means from this time to the time of four months, he's supposed to finish selling the sand that he has already excavated and also put in a remediation plan to finish within four months. And the neighbors came against the operation because he was digging very close to the property line, and they were concerned that over time, erosion or any other earth-moving issues might affect the property. So in addition to that, the PNZ also recommended that the applicant, whilst getting the sand cleared and also putting in the remediation, he should stay away from the setbacks that is required. So we met with the applicants this afternoon and determined the boundaries, including engineering, gave them the boundaries that they can operate within so that it doesn't affect the distance close to the property lines. Therefore, that is what is before you today, that you approve the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the vote was unanimous, eight to zero.
So what this means, there will be no more digging at all. He just wants to sell what he has stockpiled that he's already excavated.
That is what we are hoping for. To answer your question directly, yes, but we are not, we will not be able to be there every day to make sure he's digging any or not. But that is the recommendation.
This is something I've been thinking about for a while and something we may want to look into. We're going to run at a point in time in the future where we're going to actually use up a majority of the land that's in the city limits, and if we keep allowing this to happen within the city, we're going to run into a problem that we ran into on the south side of town because there's a whole lot of old sand pits on the south side of town that were not in the city limits until it became the city, and there's no telling how many lots that are unusable because they look like they have a bomb crater right in the middle of the property.
Yeah. What, what we are planning is that we're going to go through the city to check on areas that are possible sites or hidden sites that might be doing this excavation and stuff like that and, and stop it before we get to know. That's one of the projects.
Okay. Do you have to send the drone all over the city?
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And I also have a problem. Here, here we have people that do not have a permit for this, okay? And just last month, we only gave Mr. Kelly 30 days.
Yeah.
Okay, and we're giving this gentleman four months.
Right.
Why are we, why are we giving this gentleman four months when we gave Mr. Kelly 30 days to stop?
Yeah, Mr. Kelly, that's why I said this is a similar case but not same.
It's a very similar case as far as they're, they're running a business without, without permitting.
Right.
And now we're allowing them to run it four more months and get four more months of, of revenue.
Correct.
For a non, for a business that is not permitted.
Yeah.
I think we should, I think we should stick to the 30 days and cut it off.
You gotta do the same for everybody. We do the same for everyone.
Yeah, that was also considered at the PNZ, and what came up was that the neighborhood residents came against, or they made the complaint.
Yeah, they did. They, I read all, I read them all.
Yes. And so when they came to the meeting, it came out that he had started remediation already. And when he was clearing close to the property line, they thought he was digging. And so when the obvious, when the obvious came out that he was doing remediation whilst he was operating, they, they felt that, okay, if that's the case, then their issue that they were concerned about is no more. And so provided that he will do the remediation, they don't have issue or a rush to stop him immediately, and that if he is prepared to do the remediation, then they should allow him to sell what he has dug already and then stop. That was the conclusion because the neighbors said they will not have a problem for him to finish up in four months.
So the previous case that we had before us didn't have a stockpile of dirt. He was actively digging. Is that, is that the difference that we have here? He has dirt that has already been, this particular one has sand already dug. The other, the other case we had did not. That seems to be like the main difference. Am I understanding that correctly?
The main difference is the neighborhood.
Okay.
The, the previous one, the neighborhood wanted the, the operation to stop immediately.
Okay.
And so, but so, you know, I pled for a one month, and they, and they accepted because he also had to stop before the case, you know, went on. And so he was complaining that it's going to affect him financially, and they considered that also. And so with this one, it's the same, but the clear difference, to answer your question directly, is the neighborhood pressure.
I didn't see in any of these, and I was trying to pull it up, I don't have them here, I didn't see any of the people that said that they wanted this to stop, that they were okay with four months. So I would like to, to know where all that information is. Were you at that meeting by any chance?
No.
Oh, you're talking of the neighbor that came.
Yeah, the neighbors. Anybody?
They're not here anyway, but the applicant.
There was only one that came.
Yeah, applicant is here.
So there's only one neighbor, and all the rest of them were against you, and you only have one that said that they'd be good for four months?
There was only one that came to the meeting.
Right.
Only one.
I understand that.
Yeah.
There was only one that came to the meeting.
Okay.
And he, he agreed with the, he's my direct neighbor, he's the one that I was closest, closest, digging good, and he, he's the one that he said.
Can he come forward here and speak?
We need to come up to the podium so we can talk.
Yeah, come on.
What size excavators are you using out there? It's a 210, 210 case. It's not a real big one, you know, but it's not, small, small one. Do you have a pretty large stockpile of?
I have a pretty large stockpile, yes, but there's a lot of remediation to be done on, on the west side.
And honestly, are you planning on doing any more digging?
The only digging, I, I, I'm not digging any deeper than I am right now. I'm just taking out a road that, that was in the middle of it. There was a road down the middle, and I'm taking that out.
Okay.
And I'm using that towards remediation.
So I guess my question to you, Jose, Jose, is how many came, how many letters did the city receive that were against his operation? You said only one showed up at the meeting, but how many? Because I didn't see any, how many were against it? I didn't see.
Yeah, we don't have a full packet today.
I think it's pocket, the pocket.
Yeah, the full packet didn't download. Yeah, the full packet didn't download today because I did read them the other day. It's five or six of them that were totally against it.
Yeah, so, when it happens that we receive those letters, if they, we take their comments very seriously. However, if those who show up and make their comments that they are satisfied with what the commission has recommended.
But that was one person versus five or six, and I don't have that in the full download.
There's seven, there's seven that were against it.
It didn't download at all.
What we have.
Okay, yeah, because I read them all.
What, yeah. What I'm saying is the commission looked at all those comments, including the one who came and also gave extra comment, and they made that recommendation.
Based on the one person that was here?
Not necessarily. I'm saying they looked at those.
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
I looked at those seven, and they're all negatives. They're all very negative.
Right. And so, they looked at all of that, and they came to a conclusion that four months was enough for him to finish up.
If he had to have a business license to do this, how much would the business license, what would the, what would the city have gotten in income for a business license over the last ten years?
We've not had any industrial. What this type of business location zoning allows is light industrial. We've not had any that we register them to do the business. So, we don't have a calculation that.
I think that's a problem then, too.
Yeah.
That would be up to the mayor. He's asking us if he could say something.
Sure.
I listened to this case and to the one that you referred to prior, and there's a major difference between the two. This gentleman is ready to shut the system down and try and do it properly. The other gentleman wanted to continue for two years. So, and he kept stalling and stalling, and when asked for proper documentation, he would not do it. He didn't, wouldn't present it. That's why they did thirty days. This gentleman is trying to do it the best way he can and not financially cripple himself. It's true that he's, he's been doing it outside of the rules, but he is adhering to the rules now, and he's trying to shut it down properly.
Could we have someone go out to that property like once a week or once every two weeks just to make sure there's?
Yes, yes, we can.
Not something going on that's?
You're talking of inspections?
Yes.
Yes, we've told the applicant that we will pop up
Okay.
at random to check, to make sure the conditions that were set for the remediation is being taken seriously, yes.
Okay, because me personally, I wouldn't like to see that hole get any bigger. That's just my personal preference.
We met with the engineers today and made a plan. And you would, I asked him, you know, if he'd like to come out and look at it. And he said, yes, we'll come out periodically.
Okay.
Will your engineering plan be submitted to the city so that we, when we inspect, we know that it is being followed correctly?
I think it's the city.
The plan is from the city.
It's from the city.
Oh, the plan is from the city. Our engineers, okay. Okay. Okay.
Is there any more comments? We're good. Okay, well, no more comments. I declare this public hearing closed.
Did you want to speak? Yes. I thought she had.
I just have a question. What are the consequences to people working and operating a business under not permitting? I mean, I think the council should consider a fine and having them pay for the permits in full, whether it's thirty days, we need to set precedence with this? Or you're gonna have another person down the road continuing, they're gonna bring this up like Roe versus Wade? Not that, that's just an example. They bring it up all the time, and they're gonna throw it back in your face. Just asking you a question, plant your seat.
A zoning violation is a violation of the city ordinance, and it's punishable by up to $2,000 per day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Any other questions?
So, I have a question for Roxanne. So, obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna, we didn't find Mr. Kelly, and now I don't think it's the pleasure of the council to, to find Mr. Lawson. But I think in the future, Gary, we need to put this on a workshop and understand that, or I don't know what, how to do it, but there should be fines for people that are running businesses without permits, and we should find them.
We'll put it on work, on workshop. Probably won't be the 24th.
No, I think that's, yeah, okay. I would just like to follow up with this.
Any other questions?
Also, I just want to add one more thing, if I may, mayor and council. What about all the revenue that the city lost in tax dollars over the past ten years?
Okay, thank you.
How long have you been operating, sir?
Anybody else? Okay, I declared this public hearing closed. Now, we go to Consider an Act and Ordinance Granting a Conditional Use Permit to Robert Lawson for Four Months for a Mixed Land Use Residential and Existing Sand Escavation Operation at 1111/1121 West Moore Avenue, Aransas Pass, Texas, Block 214, Lot 10, to allow the cell of sand already excavated and to remediate the site subject to the Engineering Department's determination on setbacks. The property is currently zoned R7B, single-family dwelling.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was to, they recommended approval for four months, conditional use permit, to sell the sand that's been excavated and to remediate the site subject to the Public Works recommendation.
Can we add to that that if he continues to, if he is found to continue to excavate, that we will?
Shut down immediately.
We will not only shut him down, but we will also penalize him the $2,000, up to $2,000 a day?
Yeah, Roxanne?
Okay. You may add that as a condition, but that's an automatic condition by a city ordinance, that a zoning violation is $2,000 per day.
Okay.
So, put in other words, if he's been operating for two years, that's $2,000 per day of a violation. But given, if you're going to give him the conditional use permit, any violation, it's still gonna be $2,000 per day.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna go to the city manager, which is Consider an Act on an interlocal agreement with the city of Ingleside for customer water service connection to the property located at 2559 Williams, Aransas Pass, Texas.
Mayor and council, we've done these before. It's kind of a trade we do with Ingleside, and it goes both ways. Sometimes we will take on the customers, sometimes they will take on the customer. In this particular case, they are taking on the customer. And I anticipate another one coming in pretty soon. Following the same vein, we'll be getting a letter. I ask that letter be sent to the city secretary and myself to outline what the additional person will be requesting. But it's along the same line, and we've done these many times before.
Then I make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Ingleside for customer water service connection to the property located at 2559 Williams, Aransas Pass, Texas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna go to Consider an Act on Approving the Property Tax Reimbursement to the Aransas County taxpayers in conformity with the settlement agreement in cost number 8-19-0368-CV-C, the State of Texas X, REO, Association Against Anaxation Abuse versus City of Aransas Pass, Texas.
Been, mayor and council, been working on this a while. Sandra's been spent many hours working out the details, and sometimes it's been challenging. But what you read is pretty much it. It's, and that's in the agreement also, in the agreement settlement, settlement agreement, I should say. And Sandra, anything to add to that? Okay.
We all knew it was coming.
Yep, we did.
And what was the total, just so people, well, just so people can hear on here if they haven't read it?
The total refundable back to the taxpayers is only $114,685.
We were, I was anticipating more, but.
Just a question on, if the council approves this, how is it going to be? Is it checks or how?
We pay, we're gonna do it directly, I believe, because we thought we were gonna go through the county, and that's not working out. So, we're just gonna do it directly in an agreement with Aransas County. Is that correct?
Yes, the county's gonna be providing us the list. They're gonna be providing the list of names and addresses and the amounts. And at that point, I'm gonna contact Marcy tomorrow.
Yes, I'm sorry. If the council approves this tonight, we're gonna be contacting, I'm gonna be contacting Marcy tomorrow, and she's gonna be providing us the list of all the taxpayers and how much each taxpayer is gonna be getting. And we're hoping to get this out by, by this week. We're hoping to, to get checks out. It's a hundred and something checks that we're gonna, that's gonna take some time to input all that into the system. But we're hoping that, that we will, we would be able to get this money out to back, refund it to the taxpayers. Keep in mind, this is only for the taxpayers that live in Aransas County. The taxpayers that live in San Patricio County have already been refunded directly by the county. All right? They received a little bit, about $10,800 in refunds already. So, the county already refunded them their money. So, now, we just need to refund the people that live in Aransas County, the $114,000.
Just another question.
Yes.
The address that's gonna be provided.
Yes.
I just hope and pray that this is the correct mailing address and not for us to be getting city hall beating complaints that the check hasn't arrived, this and that and the other. I just want to make sure.
Correct, and I agree with you. So, what we plan on doing is, we're planning on having a list. So, I mean, in a week, in a week from when we mail them, if you haven't received your check, it's because it was mailed to the wrong address. And we have the ability to go ahead and cancel, do a stop payment fee of charge at the bank, and have the resident come into city hall and directly hand deliver them the check and issue them a check immediately. We have that capability. So, we anticipate, there will probably be residents, I'm not gonna say that there isn't, there'll probably be residents that don't get it because we have the incorrect address provided to us. But we're gonna really try our best to get it right. And when that happens, we do have a mechanism in place where we can immediately cut them a check as long as the check hasn't cleared the bank yet.
Okay, just want to make sure on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Sandra.
Yes.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the tax reimbursement for tax year 2020 to the DNX residents from Aransas County that were part of Phase One through Three, Agnex in 2019.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna go to Consider an Act on Approving the Issues of Request for Qualifications for a City Comprehensive Plan.
Pretty much as it's stated there, we have a comprehensive plan. Things are changing rapidly here in the community. Frequently, the time period for an update is about five years, but by the time actually we get this completed, it's gonna be almost five years. But we're starting early, and we know it's necessary at this stage because of all the changes. So, with your approval, we'll go out for an RFQ and see, see who applies. I anticipate there'll be a number of firms applying, several of which we work with right now, some of which we don't work with right now. So, with your, with your approval, we'll move forward with the process. Of course, you would need to approve the contract and all that. Move forward with the process of obtaining an update on our very important comprehensive plan. A lot of the issues you heard tonight refer back to the comprehensive plan. That stands up in lawsuits also for every city. So, just something to keep in mind.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the issuance of RFQs, is that how you say it? For the comprehensive plan, the city comprehensive plan.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to the Muntley Municipal Court Report for December 2021.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Our month for December was very slow because of the holidays. Fifty-five cases were filed. We have fifty-seven convictions that were filed. I magistrate at twenty-one inmates. We didn't issue any capex profiles or warrants at that last month. I signed twenty-one warrants for the CID department, which is the detectives. We had about twenty-nine walk-ins. I issued two protective orders, emergency protective orders. And I signed sixteen administrative warrants, and those are code enforcement warrants, administrative warrants. We're still continuing and receiving payments online, by phone, in person, IVR. The IVR is when they can do it on, by, when they get stopped by the, a police officer, and the officer checks to see if they have any outstanding warrants. And so, they're able to pay it online right there and then to avoid from getting arrested. So, that has worked out very good. So, we're moving along, and anything that, technology that comes up, our court is trying to stay, to stay on top of it in order to be able to bring more revenue or, you know, to be able to settle all these outstanding cases. And we also have the Dropbox for the individuals that don't have computers or can't pay online, and they work till after five. And we correspond with the defendants by email, phone, mail, and faxes. We're still holding pre-trials by virtual, and that has turned out to be very successful. And as long as the Supreme Court still allows us to do that, we would like to continue. We're practicing the social distancing, but now, we're not requiring for them to wear a mask. It's optional. But with the surge, we're keeping an eye to see if we're going to need to implement the requirement of wearing a mask. I hold dockets, walk-in dockets every Wednesday. We hear show cost hearings and juvenile hearings also. I'm still holding teleconferences, and I'm gonna continue doing that as long as we're allowed by the Supreme Court. There's word that they might go ahead and ask us to stop doing that and do more in person. I held a animal cruelty hearing in the month of December. I facilitated a session at our South Texas Summit. And one of my new clerks attended her first-time regional training. And we have met with the prosecutor in the building department, individuals, Burl and Tito, and Cory has also taken, has also been attending. And this is to add new code violations to our system. So, we're working closely with them in, in order to be able to have all of these code violations that are not on the list, and that way, they can be enforced. I also attached the cases that we still have pending. And the current cases that are pending are three hundred and thirty-seven cases. And these are cases that still have initial appearance, that they'll have a court hearing. And these are cases that still have initial appearance, that they'll have a court hearing, show cause hearings, why they have defaulted with the agreements that we, I mean, that they have made with the court, and pre-trials, cases with payment plans, cases that are doing community service, cases that have been deferred, cases that are doing driving safety courses. So these are cases that are still continuing. On the capis pro fines, from nineteen ninety-nine to present, we have one thousand six hundred and sixty-three cases. These are cases that have judgments. And at this time, you know, the courts are at a standstill. But I do know that the courts are lobbying or with the legislation to see if there's something that the courts can do in order to remedy these pending cases. And from nineteen ninety-nine to present, compared to other municipality courts, the same size as ours, we're doing pretty good. And on, on the straight warrants from two thousand seventeen to present, we have two thousand three hundred and eighty-nine cases. So there, we're also, compared to other municipal courts our size, we're doing good. And I believe that has a lot to do with us being proactive and trying to reach out to these individuals. And then Leinberger plays a big role with this and our phone calls, letters being issued, and also the Texas Roundup that we're getting ready to launch with the, we piggyback with the city of Corpus Christi. They do a lot of advertisement and so we are, you know, piggyback with them with the advertisement and all that. So these are ways that we are trying to keep our cases low. Any questions?
When's the Texas Roundup?
I just contacted the Corpus Christi and they're going to be launching it in February. So we're getting ready. And so what they do is they have a, a news media and our court attends and the other surrounding courts from Corpus also attend. And, and then we take one of our officers with us to see, to, you know, just to show that we have the cooperation of the police department. What has happened in the past, well, last year we didn't do anything because of the COVID. And what happened, I mean, what we do is the captain for patrol works very closely with that, with the court. And they get all the cases that have multiple warrants. And they go and, and serve these warrants. But we're going to have a two-week amnesty where we're going to put it online and of course put it out in the news media so that we can encourage people to come in. You're not gonna get arrested. We're gonna, we want to work something out with you. Also with the capis pro fines, with the capis pro fines, they already had an opportunity to have a hearing. And so if they're not able to pay, we'll also work something out with them. Because usually they sit it in. And instead of doing that in those two weeks, we'll work with the individuals. So we do encourage, you know, whoever has outstanding warrants to come in during that period and we, with the understanding they're not gonna get arrested.
One of the things that we've discussed in the past and just a yes or no, so that people understand, Joe Blow gets a, a warning for code enforcement of some sort of fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Comes in the first time, he's charged thirty dollars, I don't know, fifty dollars. Two months later, he has the exact same fine given to him, ticket given to him. He comes back into court. We're doubling that amount, correct? The second time he comes in?
The, what has happened in the past, you know, they, we have, we all know that we have a lot of individuals that are from out of town. And so what they had been doing in the past, if they did not plead not guilty, they would come in or, you know, call in and they would go ahead and pay the fine or fines. And what we're doing now is, my staff is already instructed that if this is their second violation, they have to come before the court. And that way, the court can have that lead way to up the, the fines.
It should be doubled.
Yes.
If you've done it, if you've done it again and.
And we already had one of those and he was very surprised.
Well, maybe he won't do it again.
I hope not.
There you go.
Yeah. But, but, you know, what had happened in the past was that they were, they would call, just take care of it. And we're not allowing that anymore. They need to come to court. They need to come before the court. And that way, it will give us an opportunity to make it, you know, clear that we're not going to tolerate this anymore. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to the community enrichment monthly report.
It's her again.
You missed me. So this report, much smaller, simply is just some updates about what the department's been doing for December. Still keeping in the thought of building for the next season at each of the elements, beginning with the Aquatics Center. Next slide is fine for December. We have completed the area lifeguard instructors class. We were the host this year. And what that is, is it invites all the properties in the region, the instructors of the lifeguards will come together and do their continued education, their recertification. So we were the host this year, which was kind of exciting. Successful, that is complete. We are finalizing our 2022 event plans. We are examining ways to increase the duration of our 2022 season. And that does depend on staffing, budgeting, seasons, et cetera. But we are looking for ways to expand as much as possible, community involvement. We participated in the polar bear plunge. So Aransas Pass was represented at that event this year. As you can see, our mascot in the photo there, in the photo there. And we are working on our 2022 internal flyer. It's a nice little tri-fold that we use at our events. And it will be at our open house. And next slide, if you will. At our public library, in December, we had twelve hundred and sixty-two library visits, eight hundred checkouts, one hundred fifty-two overdrive checkouts, two hundred and fifty-eight attendees for storytime. And they did share with me a couple of their accomplishments over the last twelve months. Their total library visits were twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. Total checkouts, just shy of ten thousand, nine thousand there, four hundred fifty. They did update their Wi-Fi for better bandwidth and more access outside of the building. Their computer and Wi-Fi usage, three thousand eight hundred and thirty. And this year, they developed systems for virtual learning activities, online storytime, et cetera. They updated and replaced cameras for better and increased coverage. Next slide, please. For December, at the Civic Center, snapshot of some of the items we were working on, we have activated and launched the new rec desk sales software, the updated information and design of aptx.gov/events. We have strategically renamed that URL so that we can highlight aptx and events. So it's in those three-second captures. It's a synonymous word. And if you visit the website at this moment, you will see a real-time calendar updated with all of the events and availabilities for any of the venues at the Civic Center. Again, active on our Facebook campaign, which is very successful, substantial increase in walk-ins and calls. And this month, we have realigned our staff roles to accommodate this volume, getting all of our key players in the right roles to facilitate. Final slide. Our marketing for the month of December increased social media, sharing of event promotion. This too, I have found to be very successful. And that's anytime someone visits at the Civic Center, we ask for their permission, of course, and we collaborate in sharing and promoting their events. And with the matrix on social media is that piggybacks onto their unique following, therefore increasing our exposure and giving more audience to what we have going on at the Civic Center. That ties in the notion of the venue. Mascot Media, that was something we launched in December. Our drafts for our rack cards, stand banners, and the guide to AP was all worked on in December. And we have prepared for our open house event, January twenty-sixth. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to development services, which is the monthly public works department report.
Evening, mayor and council. Before you have the project updates by department and then the overall projects, utility department, the biggest thing in December was line locates. We jumped from seven to eighty-one. So it just, to show that we keep bringing in more and more construction into the city. The streets department, their biggest was the roadside ditches in December. Stuff slows down. You don't do much paving, paving because of the cooler weather and stuff. They concentrated on ditches. Now, on the city projects, I really wanna go over where we're at with all our projects, just so that everybody's updated. On our C D B G D R grant project, Stafford McCambeau has continued moving forward. All of McCambeau from Blossom to Stafford has been put in place. They were working yesterday and today on Stafford McCambeau intersection, finishing that box connection. And they're gonna be turning down Stafford. And then they'll turn on Rife and tie into the King Ditch. So they're a little bit over halfway done with the project and is moving along. The DeBerry Saunders and Greenwood is a project that's kicked off last week on the tenth. You probably saw, we had some calls already on DeBerry where they had the road blocked, didn't have proper block. It's interesting. So we reached out to the contractor and we're telling they need to put proper lighting and so forth because people are going around those barricades and it's a safety issue when they have an open hole. They have started down, they did a section of DeBerry and then turned down Saunders. And they're moving along pretty quick on Saunders. It's open, there's nothing out there. And we, we'll have an updated meeting with them again next week, so every two weeks. They will be here for their first meeting in February to give an, an update themselves to the council. We asked them to do that monthly. The Highland and Johnson projects, we have received plans from the engineers. They're under review by the city. My review's complete. I'm having my utility staff review, make sure that any water connections and service lines are actually pointed out on the plans correctly. So we don't have any issues when they're out in the field. Thirteenth Wilson Nelson, those project plans have also been received by the city. On my comments, I do have some, a concern on the Thirteenth Street one. So I send those comments back to the engineer. Once we get all those corrections done, we'll be going out for bids. And I'm hoping we'll start that by the end of this month. That's all the ones on the C D B G. American Rescue Plan Grant, we have, the engineers have been in town doing the surveying for those projects. They started doing utility locates and all that so they can begin their designs. On the project that's being done in-house, we have the RFPs going out tomorrow on the paper for the equipment and materials that we will need to do it in-house. The Colonia Grant Project for the Sherwood Forest area, we have received plans for those. And they, I've reviewed them. There are some comments there as well. So I send them back to the engineer for revision. Once we get those revised plans and we're in agreement that we're good with it, we will be going out for bids with that one as well. The TIDOM Critical Backup Systems, we have a one-point-six-million-dollar grant on that one. We've been back and forth with TIDOM on that one. We redid the BCA, which is the benefit cost analysis. We are a little short of the number we need to be. So we have a meeting this week to see what we have to do to bump that number up. Once that gets submitted to TINA and we get the approval, we can proceed with bidding that project as well. FEMA projects, the bulkhead, right now, the only part remaining is the part where the bait shop is at. They already poured the cap and, and the concrete work next to the boathouse in, in that area. We are waiting on the engineer for the final design that is gonna, they already spoken, but they wanted in writing before they proceed with that section. And that should be kicking off here in the next week or so because they wanna be out of there before the end of February so that the season can reopen and we're done with the project. The storm pump station, number one and two, we're still under review with FEMA. Our bids came out higher than what FEMA had allocated for that budget. So we're waiting for their approval in order for us to proceed because we don't wanna get stuck fitting the bill for that one. The SCADA project, we did talk to the contractor today. All his opinion is the training on that. So we're trying to schedule something for next week when we can get all the staff together and do the proper training on the SCADA system. It is complete and in place. It is active. We can view it from our computers already, but we want proper training before we accept it. The electrical project of the train plant has been completed as well. We are finalizing closeout documents on that one so that we can get it off the books. City projects that we were working on, the Reclamite Road Projects, which are, I know we had said eleven, we were able to push it up to thirteen with funding. We were able to make the numbers work. City staff has already started on the, on the roads, compacted them, adding an additional limestone. So we have a real solid base. And we've started getting the asphalt millings already. And they're gonna start laying them out this week and next week. And in the beginning of February is when we'll have the Reclamite contractor come out and do that seal on it so that the roads look like a paved road. With this, we've included railroad street, which is one that we were iffy because we didn't know we would have the funds for it. It is included with us at this point. And hopefully with this, that includes all our dirt roads in the city. And we should hopefully be done with them. It might be one or two that we didn't touch because of infrastructure issues. And we don't wanna do any work with them until we address the underground stuff. Park improvement projects, on January twenty-fourth, next Monday, we have a presentation from the architects and engineers. Once we get final approved layouts on that, they finalize their design and we can start bidding it in the summer. Emergency levee repairs, we had a meeting out there with the contractor today. They mobilized today. They are starting this week and they expect to be done in thirty days with that project. Stormwater pump station, number three, the pumps were repaired. We are having some issues right now with the railroad tracks. I was out there this morning and took some pictures to document. We get a lot of debris still coming into the, the well. We cleaned it several times. We cleaned out the ditch several times this morning. Once I was out there, again, a lot of the black rock from the railroad is ended up in our ditch and it's getting washed into our stuff. There's huge piles of hay and, and stuff that they pushed out of the way as they're cleaning the tracks. So fortunately for us, when our contractor from the levee repair showed up, they saw someone walking on the tracks, they, someone from the railroad showed up immediately. So we got a contact for that person. I'm supposed to receive that tomorrow and I'm gonna call them and ask them how they plan to address the issues. The trash rack in the ditch has been put in place. We are ordering the straw socks now for the bottom. And hopefully by next weekend, we receive them, we'll have that in place. But the biggest issue now is the railroad and their washout that's coming into our, our system. McCambeau ditch cleaning, the RFP will be in the paper tomorrow. And in two weeks, we'll receive bids and be coming back to you to award it. And then the other two projects that we got through the tax note that we're starting to work on the RFPs is the forestment and water canal crossings. Putting together some RFPs on that so we can get that going and the ditch inspection at Goodnight to help store water there instead of on the street by, in front of H U V and all that area. So those two, I'll be working on that. And probably in February, I'll be coming for permission to go out for bids on those projects. Any questions?
As far as South Thirteenth between McClung and DeBerry, will that road get some reclaim put on it?
Yes. That's what we're doing right now. They're doing the limestone and they're gonna do the asphalt millings and then the Reclamite stuff on it.
Yeah, I know y'all cleared the brush and everything.
Yeah, we're getting some calls already of people that wanna build out there. So.
I've had a guy that's, I've been talking to for about a year.
Yeah, we got a call yesterday and today. And they wanna build two or three homes on there already. Now the problem is the utilities.
Yeah.
But they're in close range. They're within the block. So I think we'll be fine there.
Alright.
Thanks so much.
Now, we're gonna go to the.
No. The building?
Would you go?
Building Department.
The Building Department.
Okay, so.
We're gonna go to the monthly building department report.
So, yeah, before you, the presentation from the Building Department. Number of permits total for the month of December was seventy-eight. And you have a breakdown there on the different types of permits with the biggest one being electrical. Permit fees for the month of December totaled up to nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty. fifty, majority of it being residential, so we continue with the growth and people wanting to move in, so it's a good sign that we're continuing to grow. Comparison from last year to this year, we were a little bit under on the total number of permits for the month of December, but when you look at the revenues, our revenues have gone up. And then year-to-date, for the, for last year, we had a total of nine hundred and twenty-eight permits for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was collected from permits. Any questions? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to the monthly Finance Department Report.
Alright, good evening. Okay, let's stop there. I wanted to point something out on this page, because you're gonna see it in, in the graph a little bit better. Under the General Fund, you're gonna see that our budgeted revenues for the month was nine hundred and twenty thousand, and our actual was two point three, let's not get too excited. This was the bond monies that we issued in November, we had to pay for the annexation, and we got some bond money for the projects that Fernando was just talking about, so that's all that revenue in there, okay? We need to do a budget adjustment and hope to bring that to you next month, to do a budget adjustment, a budget amendment, so that we could go ahead, this numbers are gonna be more in line with the budgeted and the actual. And the same thing goes for the expenditures. Obviously, the expenditures budgeted for the month was nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, but we had actual of one point five, that goes back to the, to the annexation, where we had to pay out all of that money in, in November. So you'll see that slide, so you'll see here representing, there we go. On that side, you'll see the, the revenues are higher than, than budgeted, and then in the following slide for the General Fund, you'll see that the expenditures are higher than budgeted, but that is just because of those anomalies, I'm gonna say, that happened in that month, unfortunately. So the following, the following slide after that is our property tax collected year-to-date. I, I know that it doesn't look, you know, our property taxes haven't been collected those two months, they were kinda slow, but I can tell you that the month of December was a lot better. The following slide. This is our sales tax, this is one of my favorite slides, and you can see the growth year-to-date, October and November. You can see that we're still, you know, you see twenty eighteen there, that's, that's post Harvey right there, and we're still growing, our sales tax does continue to grow every month. The following slide, there, that's just our two pennies, remember that we share half, we share one penny with MDD and Crime Control and the city, that's year-to-date, what we've collected for, for the city. And the last slide is our water connections, and you see there where we were in twenty eighteen at three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight, and that we're right now at four thousand four hundred and twenty-three connections. So we are continuing, like Fernando pointed out, we do have residents moving in, there is action there on the residential side. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Good numbers, thank you.
That slide's a good indicator.
Yes, yes. That is correct. I still have another report.
Now, we go to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, first quarter investment report, October through December.
Okay, interest rates, you know, unfortunately, they're not, they haven't, you know, gone up yet for us. So we had, out of all our money that we had, we had twenty-two point forty-nine percent at Prosperity, we had thirty-two point sixty-one percent at Taxpool, and forty-four point ninety percent at Texas Class. Overall, we had eight point six million dollars worth of cash investments at these three different banking institutions. We earned two thousand and fifty-six dollars, that's a rate of return on our investment of zero point ten percent. Our benchmark was a three-month T-bill, and that rate of return is zero point zero five percent, which doesn't sound, you know. So we were able to exceed the benchmark, but, you know, not, I wouldn't, yeah, anyway. I wouldn't be too proud of that, is what I'm gonna say. But our banking and our, for the bank at Prosperity, we earned one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars in interest for that month. We are, we are fully collateralized, the bank has, you know, pledged enough collateral, more than enough, in case anything were to happen, that we would be able to recoup our money that we have there. At Taxpool, we earned a hundred and eighty-one dollars in interest, and at Texas Class, we earned five hundred and thirty-six dollars in interest. Any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Sandra.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to Public Safety, which is Consider An Act on Approving the Police Chief to Dispose of Old Expired Bullet-Resistant Body Armor to the Armor of God Project, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization.
Mayor, Council, thank you. This is something that we've done in the past, the ballistic vests have a shelf life on them, and once they've exceeded it, we retire them, but we will make sure that they don't end up in wrong hands or bad hands. This organization takes those, they clean them up, they refurbish them as best they possibly can, and they make sure that small departments across the nation that absolutely just cannot come up with a way to finance a vest, at least get these old used vests that have expired. So it helps them and it gives us a good outlet to dispose of them.
Excellent.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the police chief to dispose of old expired bullet-resistant body armor to the Armor of God Project, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna go to Consider An Act on the Insurance and Request for Proposals for Bay Door Replacement.
Y'all get to hear from me a lot tonight.
Oh, boy.
Feel like, feel like Chief Blanchard tonight. This is for the bay doors, it's something that was already budgeted, we've had, the back three doors specifically got damaged during Harvey, and it just continues to get worse and worse and worse. I mean, some of it even has missing slats, we had to chase a cat out of the station quite a bit, stuff like that, so that's what, that's what this is for.
I make a motion that we allow the RFP for, for bay door replacement.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna go to Consider An Act and Request for the Aransas Pass Police Department to submit, submit a grant application to the State Homeland Security Program Law Enforcement Tourism Terrorism Prevention Activities.
So this is a grant that we haven't been awarded yet, but we had to come to you for permission to apply for it. They wanted us to make sure that we had your backing on doing that.
And what would this money be used for?
Primarily PPE. Like bunker gear and...
Okay. We were waiting for an answer.
Personal protection equipment.
Okay.
That's how it is when I talk to my brother-in-law, who's been in the military, everything's an acronym, so...
Okay, perfect.
We thought you just said, blew your throat or something, I don't...
I move the Act on a Request from the Aransas Pass Fire Department to Submit a Grant Application to the State Homeland Security Program Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Activities.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to Consider An Act on a Wanted Request for Proposals to KSI Specialties to Provide Administrative Cleanup of One Thousand West Myrtle.
Mayor, Council, this has been an ongoing problem that we've been dealing with, you'll remember a while back, we did request proposals for the cleanup of this property. The bad news is, I believe we only got one proposal in, the good news is, it came in under what we were expecting. Then this will be funded through the Crimes Board, it will not come out of the city budget. So we are requesting that you approve this bid, so that we can get this process started.
And if we approve this tonight, you guys are gonna stay on it, so that it doesn't end up the way it is today.
We're gonna do the very best we can.
There you go, okay.
I make a motion to approve the bid from KSI Specialties to Provide for Administrative Cleanup of One Thousand West Myrtle. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna go to Monthly Public Safety Report.
I believe you have that in the packet, there's nothing in there unusual or different than you probably see from us every month, we're, we're always trying and trying to stay on top of things, busy, 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 busy.
And you do a great job, thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to Twenty Twenty-One Annual Racial Profiling Report.
So this is required by law, that we turn in a racial profiling report to the state every year. It's done methodically, and we even hire an outside agents, an outside company to review what we do and how we do it, to make sure that we're doing it correctly, because you, a department or an agency can find themselves in trouble if they don't do it right. So we, we double-check it, we submit it every year, and nothing, again, nothing unusual, we were found totally in compliance.
Good, super.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to the Monthly Fire Department Report.
It's me again.
Who are you?
So, last, last month for December, we ran seventy-one calls, and hopefully here in my, my annual, I'll be able to show you some little bit more, more statistics, this continues to go up for us. In our training hours, when I talk to you guys about training hours, these are in-house training hours, my guys did a hundred and twenty-eight point five in-house training hours, that's the stuff they do while they're on duty. This is not all the special certifications and stuff they go out on every year. And on inspections, we had a grand total for six. Any questions on that one?
Now, we're gonna go to the Twenty Twenty-One Annual Fire Department Report.
Mr. Gary, did you, did you have my PowerPoint? If I give it to you, can we use it?
Is this it here?
This is it, yay, alright. So our Twenty Twenty-One Annual Department, you can scroll down. So, of course, we're gonna talk about calls for service, training hours completed, inspections completed, and the other achievements that we had for over the year. So last year, we ran eight hundred and seventy-three calls. Eleven percent of those are fires, most of the stuff we're doing is a lot of medical stuff now, especially with all the COVID stuff, but when you take in account all the special incident stuffs, the good intent calls that were going out, all the service calls and hazardous calls, so hazardous calls would be like we go out on hazmat spill or something like that, it'd be a hazardous call, but with no fire. Yes, sir? So I, I usually show you, you guys this at budget, but I, I wanted you guys to see this, so we did seven hundred and seventy-nine calls in twenty nineteen. Twenty twenty-one, we did eight hundred and seventy-three calls, that's a sixteen percent increase from last year, it's seven fifty-five. I started in twenty eighteen, and we've seen a fifty-five percent increase in our call volume since I started. Major incidents that we had during that time was the Bay Street Fire, we had a beer truck rollover, the crate freeze of twenty twenty, we assisted with the ninety-seven pallets of water, twenty-five hundred gallons of water from apparatuses that we took around the city, manned fire hydrant to provide water to the citizens, if y'all remember that. Lots of COVID-nineteen responses, we're continually still having that. I have two guys out right now on COVID. The water contamination scare, the polar ice fire, if you guys remember that, and then we had a boat catch fire, four hundred gallons of fuel that ended up sinking, that we stayed out on and helped with remediation of that. This year, our total class hours were three hundred and thirty-four, but that's one thousand one hundred and seventy-three and a half hours that the guys have done training at the station. Outside of that, there are certifications that the guys got. I got four guys, there are fire officer four, three instructors, I got a new inspector, two investigators, two more driver operators, one more guy in wildland firefighting, rescue extrication. The guys learned how to use eye gels, which are a, for a basic EMT to be able to basically like innovate a patient, but it's a, it's something at our skill level that we can do, which is a huge thing, that was not even thought of back when I first came on. And we started using Narcan, the officers already had it, we didn't have a protocol for it, our new medical director, Dr. Blanchard, has been awesome, it pushes progressively into new techniques and stuff, and so we were able to pick up Narcan by doing that. Inspections completed for last year is a total of a hundred and forty-three, that includes Walmart Fire Suppression System, which we're continuing to do right now, that we're doing fire watch for. Starbucks, Coastal Bend Apartments, that's a huge one, because you look how big that building is, and the fire suppressions, and the different fire alarms that we have to go out and look at. The Harbor Master Building, Harbor Freight, Falk Elementary School, and lots of plans and reviews for new developments. So some of the other achievements that we, that we've gotten this year, we did a remodel on the station. Anybody that knows me, that I'm an Aggie and I couldn't take orange walls any longer, so I had them painted the same color as the fire truck. They're, it's the exact same color, red, we had it color matched. And then we replaced the floors. That was a project that we did in-house, we, we did all this work ourselves, we bought the materials, me, Matt, and Jason Pedrone stayed there for two nights building floor, that was just crazy amount of work. The brush truck, brush one, I didn't get to talk a lot about this through the year, we were hoping to have a big ceremony, but COVID kept us away from it. If you look like up at the top where it's camouflage gray, it's now complete, completed, it's already made several calls. We do a military theme on our trucks to honor our, our veterans. This one we dedicated to the Seven Hundred and Sixty-First Tank Battalion, which was a segregated black battalion that fought under George Patton during World War II. We added two names to the truck, one of them is, I think it's Sergeant Rivers, he was their Medal of Honor Award winner, and then William Creasy, who ended up staying in the military and achieved a rank of major. And during all this stuff, you're, you're doing so much background and fact-finding on these trucks, we found out that Mr. Creasy was actually from Corpus Christi. So we were really excited about that. So one thing that, that Captain Cruz, if you see him, he's the one standing on the ladder, he told me he wasn't gonna build another truck that didn't have a panther on it.
That didn't have a what?
A panther.
A panther?
So this truck had to have a panther. So the Seven Hundred and Sixty-First was known as Patton's Panthers, you can show the next, that's where it's finished out, Patton's Panthers, and their, their motto was come out fighting, so I thought that was appropriate for our department. The truck is beautiful, we've had several fire departments come by, they, this truck was completely built in-house, and the tank and the truck was provided by the Forestry Service, and we built it. I mean, we built this ourselves.
Wow.
And we've had lots of guys come by and look at it.
That thing's nice in person.
Yeah, it really is, it came out great, a lot of the, like, lighting and stuff is stuff that we had taken off old trucks and were able to put on this. These trucks, brush trucks are, are designed to, they get tore up because of which, you know, just what you're doing with them, so we don't put our best lights and stuff on it, we don't have to. So this is a project that I, I, I'm in phase one, or done with phase one, going to phase two, this is Lighthouse Lakes Channel, that channel right there, we put up the new signs, we got to go out on the boat, take pictures of it, but, so if you see in the, in the top corner on this side for you guys, that's the, the sign that's facing... But so if you see in the, in the top corner on this side for you guys, that's the, the sign that's facing where the kayakers would be launching from. There's one on either side of the ramp. And then at each end of the park is the bigger sign. This is caution kayaks ahead. Another grant that we were able to get, and I've been working persistently with the, the forestry service. They've been really great to us. But this fire danger sign, and this is something that we update almost every day. It's, it's funny that when this picture was taken, when we put it in, they put it on very high. We are in a high brush fire season right now and I'm really concerned about it. Any questions? It was a great year for us. We, we were, we were able to accomplish a lot of stuff.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
We're gonna go to the council workshop meeting for January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
And what you see, Mr. Mayor and Council, as far as the topics go, that's what we're having, if you're okay with that. On the twenty-fourth, and that's the park improvements project, pavilion, et cetera. And then the twenty-five foot lots, which Jan, I believe, wants to talk about. Those, because of the length of the park improvement projects, and Sandra and I went through the PowerPoint in depth last week. It's gonna take a while. And because of the length of that, didn't want to put too much on that agenda. That's recently has had one other item. So anyway, that's what's scheduled for the twenty-fourth.
I have a question. Is there a, you said a PowerPoint presentation?
It'll be a PowerPoint.
Is there any way that we as a council can get it beforehand so we can cut, no? Okay.
No one.
I just thought we could get.
Question and I've, Sandra?
I think you can.
Oh, there we are.
Yeah. You can probably be talking to him.
Okay.
And give him a deadline on Friday.
That would be great.
So we can review it and not have, you know, we can have our questions ready and things. I just thought that would be good.
Okay, we're gonna go to citizen comments, which citizen comments are intended for the matter. They're not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Anybody, anybody, Mary?
Melinda raised her hand.
Melinda Williams, local business owner, Ransus Pass citizen. I live in Bay Harbor. I wanted, I was here six months ago as a citizen of Bay Harbor and requested about what we were doing with the lights. And I just wanted to come to counsel, Mayor. Gary, and thank you very, very much for getting that and holding their feet to the fire because they have started that and my community's actually seen progress where they have things laying there and they're getting ready to put the light up, the street light up. It's very, very dark. And I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to our police department. Thank you to our fire department. How it works. Your leadership is incredible. We've had one heck of a year. And I just want to give you all a round of applause.
Takes all of us.
Thank you.
Yeah. It takes the team.
Community, yes.
And a village, no idiots.
Yep.
Oops.
Okay, now we're gonna go into executive session. Section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter of which is the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules, professional conduct of state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act relating to Mojave LTD versus City of Ransus Pass, Texas, cost number eight, eight dash two-one dash zero-one, eight-two dash C V dash C in the three hundred and forty-third District Court of Ransus County, Texas, and Com Brown Harbor Lees Handsome Sailor Yacht Chartered Incorporated. And it is?
Seven thirty-nine.
Seven thirty-nine.
We're going to reconvene in open session to consider take action if any on any item discussed in executive session and that is Aitken.
No action taken and I make a motion that we adjourn.
On your behalf?
Aye.